Meeting, we'll start with the pledge. Wait this minute, we're gonna start over here.
There you go.
Okay, we're gonna start with the pledge, thank you. Sure now.
Pledge of the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we've got, uh, start with the approval of the agenda, um, any additions, deletions, corrections. Dan, do you have anything?
I do not.
Okay, Linda, besides the...
Then everything that's been added.
One add there.
Nope.
Mel, anything?
No.
Okay, so we're gonna add to A2F, the resolution accepting donation to the Dodge County Ice Arena. So that is consent agenda F, we have, uh, donation to accept there. And I believe that is it. So I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as corrected.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan Lewis. Thanks, Dwayne. All in favor, state on.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Consent agenda. Any questions on the consent agenda? I'm just pulling up this donation that got added. So the Wildcat Hockey Booster Club has secured a grant and would like to make a donation of, uh, nearly $20,000 to the Dodge County Ice Arena to be allocated, updating the existing scoreboard, controller, and adding an additional scoreboard inside the north end of the arena. Um, and they're asking that we would accept that. So that was the thing that was added there, um, to that one. Any questions? Okay, entertain a motion?
Still moved.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Mel. All in favor, state on.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Visitors to the council, is Jeff here tonight?
Yeah, thank you. Oh, they were here for the hockey. I thought that was Jeff.
No.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought that was him.
No, I knew that was hockey.
I didn't think that was Jeff, but okay, they were here for the hockey thing.
Yes.
I didn't think that looked like him.
That was just tree and not a look.
Yeah. Okay. Um, mayor's report. There is a proclamation for Arbor Day, so... The whole thing is in your packet, but I do hereby proclaim Friday, April 30th, 2021, as Arbor Day in the city of Cass in Minnesota, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this land and future generations. So, so it be proclaimed. Public forum, do we have any cards tonight? Nope. I'm gonna skip down to... City administrator right now is at the township meetings, he's on his way back getting some of the stuff we need for these annexation and planning and zoning stuff, so we'll skip down to GO business number one.
Do you wanna do that F2, or the EDA city joint?
Yeah, we'll just do that at the same time as the committee report. So Nancy, would you like to go?
Yeah, you want, you really want me to start.
Yep, let's start with the great, exciting stuff, the audit.
Well, and if, um, if you need to interrupt when the other actions start, that's fine too.
Okay.
But I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull it up. So I'm not going to be spending, um, a lot of time of this, um, considering how many pages are here, but I'm gonna try and go quickly through it. So the first item up is, um, the audit itself, I just wanna highlight a few pages. You've all seen this repeatedly, but it does reflect some of our operations. So I do wanna say also, though, that, um, you know, before we start, we sign our letters here saying we'll make all of our information available to them, because that's what our knowledge, there's nothing fraudulent, that we're doing things in a proper manner, and so on and so forth. They are not charged with, um, assessing our internal controls, per se. However, they note whatever our internal controls might be along the way. They do not audit every transaction, and if they did, then you'd be paying double because we'd have to have them do, uh, everything in the city. So, um, uh, they say that, so you also receive separately from the audit, the audit, their government's letter, which tells you about what they did and what they may or may not have accounted. So then with the audit statements itself, you know that it starts with another, um, letter, but then the first few pages, pages four through 14, are the, um, management discussion and analysis, and it just kind of summarizes things and puts things into, um, a perspective, you know, talking about maybe what, um, levies were the year before, what's coming up, what the rates are, are we covering the cost of our enterprise funds, and so on and so forth. But the first one I brought you to is page eight. It is the summary of the entire city. So you've got everything in here, all of the government's funds, special revenue debt, along with enterprise funds, and it gives you a pretty good quick snapshot of what some of those things are. Page nine goes into specifically just the general fund, and it's a graphic way of, of seeing it. You know, we went over some of this with the annual review because we focus on departments and our budget, but you can see here anyway, in the orange, our revenues, our fees that might be collected in those particular departments to help offset some of the expenditures, even though we know that we rely on general funds to be, or general fund departments to be supported primarily by the tax levy and local government aid. And down here is the graphic representation of the resources. See, and see, we have property taxes at, uh, 44%, right, and local government aid at 15, and the others can fluctuate over time. You know, we might have one particular order here where we receive more in grants or, uh, contributions, but it gives you an idea of, of where some of those funds are coming from. The same kind of summary with our utilities, or our enterprise funds, or proprietary funds, we kind of use those interchangeably, and here we want to always see that the orange is greater than the green. The revenues, um, should be at least equal to, if not greater than the, um, the expenditures, because those utilities are each solely, um, self-sustaining. And if there are revenues, um, they're used to put money aside for future projects because they should also be paying for itself, but also to, sometimes those excess revenues are paying down principal on our debt, which doesn't show up as an expenditure. So it's healthy to see the, um, revenues a little larger. If you go up to page 20. And 20 is just one of the pages where we see some of the general funds summarized, and you've seen some of this by page, um, uh, this page, um, no, not that one, sorry, I need to go farther up. Um, it's one of the few places where you'll see some of the detail related to the general fund. Still not there yet, am I?
No.
Yeah, so here we are with the general fund, or government fund, yeah, sorry. The first column here is the general fund, and then we see, um, the second column from the left is 16th Street Northeast Project. We see debt service, that's all our debt service accounts bundled together, and then all the other governmental funds that are not the utilities. I was just gonna point out here, why is 16th Street Northeast listed separately this year? If you look back at some of our audit reports, you'll see everyone tomorrow will have kind of a one-shot deal. Well, because we receive such a large amount of revenues, which happen to be from MSAS and, uh, the grant dollars from the state, they're required to report it separately. So that, that's why you won't see it next year because it's essentially done. So, um, go up to this 25. The other one will be easier to go through. Um, well, this is the start of the utilities, and we list out, uh, the utilities and the columns going from left to right with water going through the cemetery, with the operating revenues as well as the balance sheet, and that's what we usually see there too. I do wanna point out that, I'm not trying to refer to the case, but I wanna point out that being, um, there was a reclassification, in case you notice, on page 45, just the difference in fiduciary funds, a new GAF requirement came out defining what a fiduciary fund is, and we might think of it as just having, um, a custodial or trustee relationship. Well, in the past, we've had it as, um, the festival park funds and the ice arena, and the reason for the ice arena is we're acting also on behalf of another entity. Well, the rules changed, um, our auditors spent quite a bit of time looking at this, they asked a lot of questions, and it really came down to, um, maybe, uh, the definition of custodial, and we really are just custodians of the festival funds, but we have an active management role in the arena, and that's kind of what changed this time around. Even though we're doing it also for the county, we have such a large role in managing it and operating it, we adopt the budget for it. So it's been reclassified, page 45 just details, um, what the change was, because they have to do everything by numbers, and they just show that, that reclassification. So we'll see that on page 81. If you go to 81, in your... Um, in your, trying to get over to the side wire, oh, there it is. Um, in your audit, you can see where we start getting into, um... We start getting into, um, those special revenue funds, so starting with the library, our, um, EDA funds. The Dodge County Arena's there, the numbering's out of order, but we probably won't be changing that. Very well done. We don't have many more pages to look at here. So, um, I, you know, primarily our special revenue funds, so the arena is now a special revenue fund. But you also see we have our construction project funds, so 400 are construction projects. All of our debt funds are, um, 300, and we won't spend any time going over those. So I want mostly orient you with what's laid out and where in the audit, as you know, there are a lot of notes in between, with the audit in particular, which we will be asked to approve tonight. You have any questions tonight, or, um, anytime later during the year, um, please let me know. But that's just highlighting where the more relevant significant information is in the audit. They are required to, um, combine everything in this particular format, so. Any questions on that before we go to the handles, the other, I know it's, it's, um, I know you all got it in the drop box, but...
The PowerPoint?
That's the PowerPoint, yes. All right, so the PowerPoint will be easier, we'll just locate the pages as fast. Again, this, um, when we bid out the services for the auditor this year, um, because of, uh, the different approach of their, of some of the auditors, we ended up going back to our auditor and saying, well, would there be a discount if you did not come in person? Okay, well, may I capture? So we're getting a discount for them not being here tonight, and you all have suggested that I present it on their behalf. So these aren't, this isn't what I presented, this is what they presented it, and they've entrusted it to me to, to pass it on to you. So this is their summary, and you will be familiar also with how they present it, information in the past, mostly graphically, which is always a great way to look at information and assess. But they summarize it here on this page, and they summarize it again at the end with other information. So first and foremost, they wanted, uh, they mentioned that it was a clean audit, it's, um, unqualified, it's, as far as they can tell, and now it's, you know, that's always that, it's, um, free of any mis, material misstatement, meaning what they verified the numbers to, um, were accurate according to the supporting documentation. So they tie out everything, the bank statements, every individual investment, and so on and so forth. Uh, under the financial statements section on this page, they said they reviewed the results of the city, and they did, we went over all the details. On April 2nd, they still have questions up until last Thursday about, uh, um, the, uh, new GAF requirement affecting the ice arena reported. Uh, they also say that the management discussion analysis was prepared by the city, but it doesn't change too much from year to year, it just drops in the final current numbers. There are no legal compliance issues this year. And then, um, in the management letter, which is at the end of the audit, they always have to state their findings, and because of the city aside, and it's, so it's not uncommon to us, they always have to state that we did not have a staff large enough to segregate all the duties. So we have some overlap of responsibility, especially when you follow the path of the cash. And, um, I, I do a lot of, some of the work, but we have other people who do payroll, accounting, um, or I mean, accounts receivable, utility, all that, but I still have to assure the numbers are done. But I still make a lot of the adjusting entries and, um, uh, you know, when it comes to, uh, cash management, we have a lot of systems in place, but at some point I still have to be touching the cash even though I have to record it. So, so those kinds of things. So they always put that in as a finding. Also, we are required to have someone audit our books, but because we have to have someone audit our books, they have to put that in a finding, because we can't do it ourselves. So, um, that, they always list that too. And then again, the auditor's responsibility letter at the end of the report. So we'll go right into the graphs and kind of move through those. If you have questions, please stop me. Um...
Nancy, Nancy, before you get there?
Yes.
You know, for the purpose of the audience, you wanna put this in the slideshow?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it was being broadcast out there.
And, yep, and just go from the current slide. There you go.
Sorry about that.
There, it's a little bit easier to read.
Yes, okay, thanks. Um, so the auditor, um, just to help you, um, look at where the city's at, they always prepare this table of tax capacity, you know, um, their numbers given by Dodge County. Uh, what this is telling us, well, the goodness, that continues to increase, we wouldn't wanna see a decrease. But that tells us that, um, if we compare it to our taxes, if we're having an increasing capacity, there's a possibility that we share the costs among more people in the city. So that, um, on a percentage basis, the levy isn't the same from year to year, as a percentage should be going down as long as that pie is getting bigger. So they, they show that for comparative purposes. Um, I don't have, here, how do you page down with this?
If you just scroll with your mouse.
It is still scrolling, okay, it wasn't scrolling. All right, so, um, we'll look at a few of the revenues from the governmental funds, and again, this is the nonutility. So we have, um...
Can you page down for her here?
Oh, yes.
And are you doing that now?
No, I didn't. I can't.
Oh, well, you can allow it to scroll down to get the, whatever happened, thank you. Okay, tax increment revenues, uh, again, increased from 19 to 20, a lot of this is based on valuation, because we haven't really had a change in our TIF district, um, but we know that the valuation for the property in Highway 57 increased quite a bit. This is summarized for you, we have three TIF districts, and they're the only ones we've had for a while. Prairie Meadows started in 2007, will go until 2026, um, which is their developed, their note term, but the district itself goes to 2031. So we might see something different coming up next year to maybe extend that out a little. And then we have the Alpedam folks, then TIF, and then the downtown TIF.
Do you want me to hit page down?
Yeah, which page, please. Take that. LGA, um... One back.
Go up.
Oh, go up, okay.
There you go.
Nope, now one forward. There we go.
There, all right.
Now one step. So this is just comparing local government aid over the years. Um, as noted, LGA is 50% of the total revenues, and it's noted there that the LGA will increase to 2021, but in the uncertain times that we're facing last August, with the fear of the state unallotting because of, um, uh, you know, a more dire economic situation, we did not budget for that full amount for, um, 2021. So if we actually received this, we have, um, a rule in place, so it's kind of like our general rule for the stabilization fund. The other rule is any excess TIF goes into the stabilization fund. Now certainly a council had different uses for it, they could go there and then come back out, or you, you could certainly authorize something different for that particular purpose. Okay, next one. Um, so the, next one...
Am I on the right one now?
Well, no, you're going, no. Okay, this...
Yep.
That's the right one.
Yes.
Okay, I have to go down, okay.
Yep, so here it just gives you a, a perspective of where we're at with, um, all of the revenues that we just looked at. So the largest being property taxes in the color blue column, the gray is the LGA, and so there again, you just see what, where we get most of our financial support. Okay, next one, thank you, next one. General government expenditures. So this is kind of the administrative arm of expenditures being gathered into one account, mayor council, elections, so on and so forth. Not big differences between 2019 and 2020. Next one's public safety expenditures. Again, not much change over time, but letting you see how things might have changes. This is, uh, police, fire, and, um, building inspections included in these polls. Next one's for public works. We are there. Um, again, we asked all departments to cut back where they could because of COVID, and we know that, um, public, or all departments cut back because COVID, or where we would be. And public works is part of our general fund budget, and they cut back quite a bit, but what also helped is that snow from 2019 was 97,000 to clear our streets, and in 2020 was only 35. So all these things added up to a big drop. Next year, you can plan already to see that line increase. Okay, next one, cultural recreation. Uh, the big difference here is that we moved Ice Arena to a special revenue fund, and, um, so that added into the total. Uh, you can skip over the library, you know, they have court savings and some payroll expenditures. But this one you can kind of see again comparatively from 2013 to 2020, the difference in, um, in where the expenditures were. And we know that with our contractual obligations, as a general increase in expenditure cost, that the trend would normally be to, to be in, um, an increase over time. Okay, the next one, moving into reserves. I like to highlight this one, um, it gives us an idea of the general fund expenditures for the year, that's in total, but the unassigned fund balance. In other words, what's the cash and investments we have left in the general fund. And because of the timing of our taxes as well as our local government aid, we don't receive those, uh, but for June or July and December. So when we go into the year, we have to have at least, you know, generally speaking, at least half our budget in the bank. And so, um, that's why we look closely at what those reserves are at the end of the year. We have a half a year's worth of our budget, we always target about 50%. And you can see in 2013, we are way down there. I mean, in fact, there was a low cost for, were I, um, my part for 2013, 2014, being at a sma, such a small amount. Well, given the, the request that we put in place to save money where we could last year, um, we had some COVID, or tariff act funding applied to already budgeted items as they were allowed by the state, and we see, we received, um, 150, 200,000 in the, um, the funding from the flood the year before. So all those things really added to the cash that we had on hand. So the really good news is we've got a buffer there if we need it, something else come up, um, council could consider to spend some of that because it adds up to a very significant amount. But we also don't know what the future will hold either, um, with the pandemic, so. But it's, it's a good position to be in, but there's a reason why we're there. Okay, next one, library fund balance. Again, a lot of that increased over 2019, was the savings in payroll, over 53,000 less in payroll for that. The next one, the EDA fund balance, supported through taxes, and I, I, so the next few pages talk about fund balance or cash, or cash and investment. This is fund balance, so it lists about, about 150,000, but it's strong, put in perspective, because they have 68,000 in cash. The rest is in receipts. So we can't always spend what we have on hand in our fund balance. So the EDA Financial Assistance Fund, the same point here, they have a balance of about 53,000 that they're able to lend out, and the remains, or their fund balances, is essentially what they have out in loans. Debt service. Just one of our bonds, it just shows the history, and we would expect those balances to decrease over time, as principal is paid down. Um, just a reminder that the 2013 A Aquatic Center, uh, bond was refinanced, so that's that 2020 A, the second one from the right. And then we refinanced the TIF bond that's related to the TIF district, and that's the second one to the right, did I say that wrong? The aquatic center is the one all the way to the right, the TIF bond is the second one to the right. And we had had built up quite a bit of funds in there for various reasons, almost from the outset of the fund. So we waited for our opportunity to actually, um, uh, refinance some of that. So you'll also see that from, um, that original TIF bond down to that balance, it's less as well. So it's exciting to see that, and, um, you know, 2022 will be adding a couple more items to this. The next two I'm not going to go over, now pension liability, they were required to report from the state, this was a couple of years ago, where we had a huge adjustment of 2.5 million, because they have to kind of take the present value of all potential pensions, even though it's more pay as you go. So that's reflected there. Next one as well is capital projects. This specific capital project fund is specifically the stabilization fund, and, um, um, no, this one is only that, there's another one where there's a blank. This is only the stabilization fund. It increased from 2019 to 2020, uh, because given the formula, we were able to add about 319,000. We have certainly had years where we haven't been able to do that, but we are able to add that to that fund, so we're now sitting on a balance of about 506,000. Okay, questions before we go to utility fund? Am I going too fast?
Nope.
All right. So here, um, auditors want you to look at what the funds look like, each looking at revenues versus expenditures, and then, um, balance... each looking at revenues versus expenditures and then, um, balance sheets or funds available. So with a lot of fun, we'll look at that. You can see that the revenues in blue are greater than their expenditures. And again, with our utilities, we particularly expect that. Why are they so much greater? Well, because this doesn't account for the principal that's due on some of those debt payments. So generally speaking, um, they're doing fairly well. The next sheet with the balance sheet, um, the green is the debt. And it's just giving you an idea of what overall total debt is for that fund compared to the cash they have on hand. So if things stop right now, how much money would we have to pay off the debt? And that's just one way to look at it. Um, wastewater fund, the same, um, good reserves, older, or excuse me, good revenues, older the expenditures. Um, note there at the bottom that, um, into, well, that was a connection fee in two thousand seventeen. So we get about a hundred and twenty thousand from them every year just from operations and then make theater portion of the, the bond. So wastewater fund balance sheet, again, just you can see where the debt is compared to the amount of cash that they have on hand. Uh, the note at the very bottom of the page, just for your interest, about excluding fund two thousand fifteen A. It was back then, it will drop out shortly. But it was three different, three different bonds that we refinanced into one. And you kind of move numbers around. So that's why we exclude that there. Uh, the electric fund and revenues over expenditures looking healthy. The next page, it says cash balance. It's really the cash and investments. We're not sitting on four point six million in, um, cash alone. We would certainly be investing it. Um, again, the balance is increasing for various reasons. We know we've had some bad years where we've lost to the tune of about six hundred thousand dollars. And some of those are reflected in some of the years that you see. But we are working intentionally as per our rate study to build up the reserves because, uh, we have, we are self insured in this area. But also extras that may be, or, um, extra funds may be available, help with projects we have on the horizon. And we may not have to rely on debt depending on the balance of this is at that time. So also just to let you know that why doesn't this page include the electric debt? Well, there is some electric debt, but there's not much. The only remaining amount of electric debt that's currently on, um, uh, their balance sheet is related to their share of the public works building when we constructed that in two thousand eight. And there's only about four more years left of that. A total of only two hundred thousand. So it would be just a little blip on here. So I think that's why they left that off. Stormwater fund, the same thing with the revenues. Um, it's relatively speaking a fairly new fund, but it was realized back when it was created by the city that it needs to pay for its share of, um, construction projects. And with the next page, again, the cash balance, which is their cash and investment, um, it's big influx of cash was a cash transfer from the city to pay for the East Main project. Some of that came out of the stabilization fund. And we can see that we've paid down for some of that. And, um, it's going to pay a little bit of its share of I and I expenditures this year. And we'll be watching those balances closely to make sure that, um, they can continue to pay for any, um, infrastructure projects that come up. Okay, electric fund, um, consistent margins always across the board. So we don't need to talk much about that. The cash balance you can see can grow. Um, we have a pretty healthy year with COVID this year. Um, those funds tend to use to, um, pay for other city uses because we have that at, um, someday, a future expansion or a new building. But also, um, we had originally budgeted for quite a lot this year in light of the construction project. And, uh, you know, that's not happening till twenty twenty two. So these extra funds will be help be able to sustain some of the losses that are anticipated for twenty twenty two. Cemetery, again, we know that, um, it really doesn't earn much in the way of revenues. You can see that it's totally flipped from the other utility fund. It's anticipated that in two and a half years, it will have to become part of the city, if, if not sooner. And next, um, next page, yeah, you can see that we're just completing the fund balance every year. So the last page is the summary. Um, general fund did increase. Again, that, that mark of seventy four percent of total expenditures, we're very comfortable at fifty percent. This is extraordinary that it's this high. But the city will make good use of those funds at some point. Um, it notes that the EDA established that new revolving loan fund, fund two twenty six, uh, with money from the regular EDA fund of sixty thousand from electric. All payments are being made timely on all of our debt. We did complete two projects, uh, sixteen street northeast. But we also essentially finished each East Main, and that wasn't listed here. Rates, um, utility rates are covering their operating costs as well as their principal payment. And, um, the electric and the liquor fund reserves continue to grow. So thank you for your patience while I blew through that. But if you have any questions, it's fine.
Thank you, Nancy.
I would only ask that you approve the audit then.
And thanks for getting all that stuff together with the auditor.
Sure.
Having a clear report, so.
If you have any questions today, you can kind of let me know.
I just want to highlight, Nancy mentioned it's exceptional, but really it's by design that we have a prudent budget. You know, we budget below our revenues and also the fact that we know that there is some potential larger capital projects that are upcoming. So that certainly is something that we're trying to plan in advance. That's a tiny large, uh, levy increase. But Nancy did a great job getting that together.
Thanks.
Okay, any questions for Nancy, anybody?
No, I'll move to, uh, accept the audit report.
Okay, if we have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks Mel, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Thanks Nancy for jumping ahead there. We're going to go back to E, um, public hearing. So our first public hearing is on the joint annexation for the Zed property. So I'll open the public hearing regarding the joint annexation of Zed. Does anybody have anything they'd like to say? I will close the public hearing. Okay, we have a resolution in front of us that was brought to us by planning and zoning. So any questions for Duane's or rep there on planning and zoning? Questions for Duane on that?
Yeah, the, the board reviewed it and recommending approval.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution, uh, in the matter of the orally annexation between the city of Cass and the Mandeville Township pursuant to Minnesota statutes four fourteen dot zero three two five.
I'll make that motion.
It's Duane, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks Dan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, resolution passes. Thank you. Um, second public hearing, uh, joint annexation for Comet Acres. I'll open the public hearing for comment on that. Anybody have anything they'd like to include? I will close the public hearing. Let me open the right one here.
On this particular one, there was a fair amount of discussion from the public at the planning and zoning regarding this. Um, all comments were heard and, and discussed among the board. Um, this is in compliance with our, um, comprehensive plan. And so based on that, uh, the board is recommending that this be approved.
Okay. Any questions for Duane on that clarification? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks Dan, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks Mel, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Committee report, uh, planning commission ordinance revision regarding impervious surface.
We had a very full planning commission agenda on Monday, but, uh, I appreciate Duane running the meeting. He did an excellent job, I think. And, uh, the, uh, the planning commission discussed this at length and, uh, basically took a look at changing this to, uh, meet for our uses in terms of institutional uses. Um, so if you take a look at the summary of the ordinance there, you can see kind of what it's, uh, going to be talking about. Um, the ordinance is looking to be approved regarding maximum impervious surface for institutional uses in residential zoned areas. Um, it would allow for the, uh, percentage to be moved up to sixty five percent. Um, Laura is here from our, our city planning firm as well. Uh, if there's any questions for her, um, this is something that we knew as, uh, when we, when we redid the code, that we knew there'd be some updates that'd be necessary. And, uh, they felt that the amount of green area allowable at thirty five percent was still in compliance with our, uh, accepted regulations. Laura, did you want to highlight anything else?
I think you covered everything, Tim. But if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer it.
So that sixty five percent is adequate for the runoff? We're not adding to our problem of drainage or anything? Any comment from the engineer on that at all?
Absolutely. Um, so within the other part of the ordinance revisions included, uh, more robust stormwater management ordinance. Um, so for this particular application of the Zed application, they're providing additional stormwater management. That's also going to a MINDOT right away. So MINDOT's kind of already on them, um, in reviewing their, um, stormwater, um, facilities and making sure it's adequate for their standards, which are pretty much consistent with ours. So, um, we always have that to kind of fall back on if we're adding more impervious surface, so.
Okay.
So this is for situations like the Zed addition?
Correct, yep.
Institutional uses, so.
Okay, that's what I was trying to understand.
Hospital, if there were a city facility or something like that, that's right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much for clarification. Any questions, Dan, at all? Questions, comments, anything else to add, Duane?
Nothing to add.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to adopt this, uh, revised ordinance and also for the publication of the summary of a resolution.
Perfect, thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks Dan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number two, the Zed comp plan revision and rezone. That is number two.
Including your packets, you should have a request for council action that breaks down the, uh, request that the, uh, folks at the Zumberg Education District are making, uh, represented by Mr. Patrick Gordon. They are, uh, basically looking at a, uh, a new facility in a residential area. And they're, um, it's about six point one two acres, uh, the total facility. And it's partially would be, um, added into the city limits as well.
Perfect. Any questions for staff on that? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
And the, the motion, um, as indicated, could also include the rezone. So you've got A and B under Zed there.
Okay.
Um, so they're also requesting that rezone, um, because it would be going from, uh, let's see here, concurrent with joint resolution changing zoning district boundaries to classify the identified parcel, uh, to R one. So basically it's going from an ag use currently to a R one residential.
Sure, that makes sense.
And a motion to be made for both of those together if, if it was warranted.
Any questions on that? I mean, everybody knows where the property is at, right? It's half farm field now, so it needs to be.
Yep. Yeah, and I'll just make comment, there was no public comment at the planning and zoning on this.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the comp plan revision and approve the rezone from, uh, the current holding pattern, I believe is the designation to, uh, R one.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks Dan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, number three under there, Comet Acres comp plan revision or rezone, the same thing here. Anything to add on this, Duane, at all from pl- planning and zoning's perspective?
Uh, again, there was a, a fair amount of, uh, public input, uh, primarily from the adjoining property owners out there. Um, uh, we did hear their comments, uh, and it was discussed. And, uh, this again is in, uh, aligned with our comp plan. Uh, and so, um, and our future urban expansion areas. So it is a recommendation from the planning and zoning to approve the revision and the rezone to R one.
Okay. Any questions for Duane on that?
Just a comment. So the, the revision, I think, if you don't mind, Duane, just primarily deals with, um, changing the density requirements for R one. Um, this development is, um, somewhat different than many of the developments that we've seen over the last couple of years. Uh, in fact, I think the last previous development that would be similar would be the little subdivision because these are larger lots. And typically, um, we do try to look for density in certain developments. But the decision the planning commission made was based on the fact that it's, uh, very similar property to the West. So it isn't creating a different type of classification where there are large lots to the West. Um, and also the fact that they do see, uh, the request from the developer with market-related forces. His desire is to offer different, uh, property types to the city. And also, um, we felt that, uh, at this time, it was a proper use of the, the property, so.
I will ask, did, uh, there was a sixth condition added to that? Did we come up with some language regarding, um, it, it said it had to be on the outskirts of the city boundaries? Did we address that?
Laura, I did have a discussion. Laura, would you go through that language? And maybe just go through all the conditions, actually.
Yeah, so, uh, with the comprehensive plan, uh, revision, there was some, uh, language change within the, uh, description of the, uh, low density residential, as Tim had mentioned, to allow some flexibility in certain circumstances, um, to go below the density range, uh, which had previously been defined at between two and four, uh, units per acre for low density residential. This gave the flexibility, um, in certain circumstances, as Tim had mentioned, with, um, being surrounded by sort of that more rural residential, large lot development, that already neighborhood pattern already existing, that this is more, um, a lower density than two, two units an acre would be appropriate. Um, the language, uh, that staff had proposed had, um, some language talking about it being appropriate to also be on the edge of the urban growth boundaries. Um, at the request of the, or at the recommendation of the planning commission, we actually removed that language and, um, the urban growth boundary continues to move as the city continues to develop. And so, um, it kind of added an extra layer, um, that the other elements already covered within the assessment. Again, the comp plan language is a guidance and, um, is enforced by your zoning ordinance. And then Duane also referred to, within the preliminary plat, um, recommended approval, we added a condition, or the, um, excuse me, the planning commission recommended the addition of a condition, uh, to have the applicants meet with city representatives, um, township representatives, and, um, to discuss a road connection to the north.
I think Laura, that might be more appropriate to discuss under the, uh, the preliminary plat part of the agenda as opposed to the review items.
My fault.
That's all right.
Okay, thank you very much for the information. Any other questions after that? Does that answer your question, Duane?
Yeah, yeah. In fact, that was removed, yep.
Okay, all right. Okay, I'll entertain a motion regarding the Comet Acres comp plan revision and rezone.
I'll make that motion at the recommendation of the planning commission.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks Mel, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Onto the preliminary plat for Comet Acres.
So Laura highlighted, uh, one of the conditions. Uh, this is a fifty one acre, I think around fifty acre.
Fifty one acre, yep.
Fifty one acre of area that the plan is to have thirty eight homes. 51-acre of area that the plan is to have 38 homes placed. We did review the plat. There were some concerns, one about the volume of homes and only a single entry. So that's where the possible connection to the township road to the north was raised as a possible secondary. Joe happens to be in attendance as our fire chief tonight. Current fire code is recommending a limit of 30 homes with a single entry. So there is nothing to issue with the preliminary plat, but it's certainly a condition that we will want to discuss prior to the final plat. We did talk about easements for drainage. We did talk about flooding and different things like that. And it was very well talked through. And the recommendation was to go ahead and approve, but with the conditions that were conveyed to the developer, that will be addressed prior to the final plat.
Okay.
I was just highlighting, I did sit through the township board meeting this evening, which was interesting. I don't mind getting yelled at, but getting yelled at by people that aren't residents of the city is not always the most pleasant thing, and I'll be on the record for that. There, there's some definite opposition to this project, to development in that area from residents outside the community. How much of that is warranted? Many of the residents were from the township who were in attendance on Monday night, and Dwayne's well aware of them. Listening to township board and boaching that question of that road with them, they would like to see that road extended and connected, based on the feedback they received from the township board, or township members.
Members.
They plan on doing their road tour in the township next week, so they'll be inspecting the condition of that road and where it would connect in. So we'll have to talk to the developer, obviously, but that was the request from the township board tonight, was to look at that as part of the final plating. So they did table the annexation request. Based on opposition from residents, I think legally speaking, we have a strong, you know, early annexation agreement, and that's been provided to the township board members. And I anticipate that they'll take further action at their May 3 meeting. So, there you go.
All right. Discontents, the first sign of progress.
Well, I mean, it was a good discussion, and certainly, you know, a lot of folks are necessarily thrilled when they have development in their backyard. And I think we all understand that. At one time or another, every part of the city was on the edge. And that's fair to tell a property owner that they can't develop because you don't want them to, is probably not something that I would plan on doing. But in the long run, you know, it is what it is.
I can only comment that there's probably few places in this nation that you can pick your neighbors.
Okay, thank you. I'll make the motion to approve the preliminary plat. Do I have a second?
I'll second that. Thanks, Dan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, thanks, planning and zoning, for a lot of work on this stuff here the last few meetings, so appreciate that. Full business. Number two, approved job description for parks.
Oh, you got the EDA.
Number two, yep, I just said, number two, EDA city joint partnership.
Including your packet, you've got a letter from the chamber board requesting to do some strategic planning with the city council. They'd like to sit down with a, sort of a joint meeting in the month of June. I attended the chamber of commerce meeting today, and we discussed this a little bit. They're looking at revising their programming, and they'd like to see what they can do to work with the city and EDA. So you can see what's in the packet there, their request to work. Without objection, I would look to schedule some sort of a joint meeting with the chamber board representatives, if that's amenable.
That's fine, yeah. Garrett. All right, on to G2, approved job description for parks, street worker.
Previously, the council had reviewed this position. It was a position that's open due to a employee resignation. And the feedback that I've received from our public works director is that he would like a little bit more flexibility in job description. You can see there that it would be a public works, parks slash streets worker. Currently, our public works department, streets department, and our parks work in tandem to do a lot of projects already. But he felt that it would be appropriate to add into the job description that it would be either, they'd be required to work either or, because he felt it was just beneficial for everyone to be on the same, you know, playing field. There's no change to the pay grade, because it's the same pay grade outside of the job descriptions.
Perfect. Yeah, we've been trying to work toward this for a while now. Thank you.
So our goal would be then to post this, I'll be working with the public works director, we'll post it locally first, and then it'll be posted based on the feedback we get through the league and through our local newspaper.
Perfect. Any questions, anybody? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the job description. Do I have a second?
I'll second that. Thanks, Dwayne. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number three, accept high bid for 2004 fire department grass rig.
So previously, the council had allowed us to put this out for bids. I don't know if you want to talk about it a little bit, Joe, but it's a 2004, 350?
Yep.
So it's a pretty heavy-duty truck. It would utilize two large degrees for the last 10 years, but it had a little over 10,000 miles, so it was in fine condition. The fire department did a great job of keeping it in good shape. And so we did put this out, and unfortunately, yes, you got the trick or scratch from me there, so you can kind of see where I was. The, why don't you talk about it? The high bidder that we found was Mr. Paulson, I believe, Joe?
Yeah, so we had a total of 14 bids, sealed bids. Tim and I opened those last Friday with Tony Paulson was the high bidder on that. He's already submitted a check. We've secured all of the fire, the lights and sirens and all that have been removed from the truck, and it's all ready to go. Basically, just waiting your approval tonight, and he'll be out to City Hall tomorrow to get the title changed over and take possession.
Thank you. Any questions for the chief on that? Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we take the high bid from Mr. Paulson.
Sure. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Mel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. New business. Number one, gambling premises permit for KM snow drifters for bingo at events. That's in your packet, H1.
Any questions on this? And it's pretty straightforward. It's right there. It's in our ordinance and everything, so. Entertain a motion to approve.
Removed.
Thanks, Dwayne. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Dan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Joint powers agreement heroin task force.
Josh, if you want to just step up and talk about this a little bit, we've actually got two for Josh tonight, so.
The first one, the anti-heroine task force. Fortunately, we had two fatal overdoses last month. This joint powers agreement will help fund overtime for opioid-related overdose investigations.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the chief? I'll make the motion to approve the joint powers agreement for the heroin task force. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Mel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Joint powers agreement for the BCA direct connection.
Yes, and this is a renewal of our five-year joint powers agreement that allows us for access to criminal justice data network information.
Okay, thank you.
I'll move to approve.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Dan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks, chief. Number four, sewer forgiveness request.
Including your packet, you have a letter and some documentation from Mr. Phil Johnson. There was a pipe break in his home. He was, I believe, out of town at the time in the winter. We know we have a number of residents who go out of town. He's asking that the city council would take a look and possibly forgive a portion of his bill related particularly to the sewer.
Okay.
He noted that the vast majority of the water did not go down the sewer drain, and so certainly is up to the council how they'd like to take action there.
I believe we've done this in the past on the sewer portion, but not the water. You know, the water ran, so we paid for the water, but the sewer didn't necessarily go down the drain, so I guess I don't have a problem with doing something.
What's his average monthly sewer bill?
It depends very much. It's hard to get, I mean, he's not in the, not in the home very often. So I did make a little note on there, maybe you can't see it. My recommendation was to kind of have like a, I guess I like to call it a one-strikes rule, where typically if somebody has a sewer issue like this, you know, we'll take that. And, you know, obviously, if it's a hose that's left open or something like that, we certainly want to work with them. 2,500 was the number that I came up with in terms of what we'd be willing to potentially forgive. However, the council can tend to do any number. I think his total number was.
28.
Like 26 or 28.
2862. So you're bringing it down to 362?
Right.
The question I'll have that doesn't really pertain to, when we get that new meter system, will that help?
Absolutely.
Notify us if there was a.
That's one of the biggest reasons for us to institute the AMI, both for electric and for water and sewer, is that that'll be giving real-time readings. Whereas now, the only time that we know there's an issue is really when we do the drive-around and they say, well, he had 50,000 or 100,000 gallons in that month. So instead, now, our utility billing department will be getting that live feed, basically, and at least once a day, they'll be getting a feed from the water, and every hour, they'll be getting a feed from the electric. So that's going to be very helpful to us to avoid these issues in the future, because our guys will be able to go out and shut the water off, you know, as quickly as possible.
Okay. That's what I thought, but I wanted to verify that.
Any other thoughts or opinions?
I'm okay with the recommendation.
Yeah, so am I.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I would make the motion that we would give them the $2,500 credit on the sewer.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Mel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Administrator's report.
All right. I apologize for being late tonight. As I said, I was at the township board meeting, and it was very interesting. A number of updates that you've got in your packet there, and I won't necessarily go through all of them. But I did attend the library board meeting last night, which was an excellent meeting, and I do have their mission statement, potential mission statements included in the packet there for you just to see. They're looking at that revision. I think that they all have different positives and negatives, but if you've got feedback for them, I'm sure that Mel would love to take that back right now.
Sure.
Other than that, there's some different funding opportunities that I've tried to identify. The wildlife habitat funding, which I think might be some way we would potentially be able to get some money for some wetland. If we were purchasing certain areas of property that might qualify for this, so it might be a little outside the box, but it could be useful for that. Additionally, you've got some updates there on other things. Really do appreciate all the hard work that went into our audit review. It takes a lot of time, and all of our, you know, department heads and staff that did such a great job with that. Other than that, I would take any questions that anyone had.
Tim, what is this Community Heart and Soul seed grant? I tried to look it up, but I couldn't get a good feel for what it was.
Yeah, so it's part of what I'm kind of looking for with our EDA and our Chamber of Commerce. You know, the chamber itself is looking to try and get into more concrete programming, I think. So this is sort of a framework that could be utilized for a community to sort of basically get business coaching and provide more of a structure for enriching the community over time. You know, I'm not sure if it's the right fit. I was involved with the Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation in a previous job, and we had what's called the REB program, Rural Entrepreneurship Ventures. And that's for communities that are a little bit smaller than Casson. But I think that this program could have some of the similar type of impact. A number of communities in Iowa participated in it, and so I'll be sharing that with, I'll be sharing that with the chamber. It's probably something to take a look at, as it might be interesting for them to get involved with something like that.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Tim? Okay, thanks, Tim. Appreciate it. Number two, kennel questions.
Well, I don't know. We had a good discussion on Monday night a little bit with the planning commission, and I think, Linda, maybe we just wanted to let them know that the planning commission is going to be taking a look at revising some of the language potentially in the city code based on feedback we've gotten from the police department related to some potential ambiguities. And we appreciate that being brought to our attention, Josh, so thank you very much for that. And I think it won't be a difficult fix, but it's related to the, basically the rules on how many pets you can have in your home, how many dogs you can have in your home. And there's potentially some language that doesn't conflict, but it's not as clear as it could be. So the planning commission is going to be looking at that at their meeting in May.
Okay, thank you. And then holiday, New Year's holiday discussion.
This was another issue that Linda brought to my attention. Go ahead, Linda.
It's just kind of up to you. New Year's holiday, New Year's falls on a Saturday. It's in 2022, which means our holiday would be Monday, because it's not a 2021 holiday. It was brought up to me by a couple employees wanting to know what day to get off.
Saturday.
Do you get Saturday off?
I like it. Every Saturday and Sunday.
But I didn't know if anybody had any strong feelings that, because 2021, and maybe this could be brought up maybe during union negotiations, instead, 2021 would have 11 holidays then, and 2022 would have nine, instead of having 10 holidays each year.
So typically, if it was, if a holiday was on Saturday, we would have the Friday previous.
Correct.
But as Linda mentioned, you know, because it's a changeover in years, that's what would happen right now, is that would be on Monday. So I don't know if.
Doesn't make a lot of difference to most people, but it could to, when it comes to negotiations.
Yeah. What's the national recognition? Is it the 3rd?
Friday. I think it's 31st, isn't it?
Looking at your calendar here.
I thought this was the 3rd, because it falls in the same year then.
That's what I thought, too, when I looked it up. The national recognition would be. But.
I was just seeing if I could find it. I missed it.
It's going to be observed on, looks like Friday.
Friday.
Yeah.
Day off for New Year's Day. Be Friday, December 31st.
Either way, it doesn't, I don't, you know, we don't want to belabor it, you know, it's just a matter of letting them know what, letting staff know which day that they can plan on.
Well, or me, I mean, as long as, I mean, you get the day off, you get the day off, right? I mean, it shouldn't blow anything up with the contract, but.
I can't, well, it's not an old contract anyways, so.
That just seems to make sense, just to align it with the national holiday.
Maybe we should address that negotiation, that if this happens in the future, we'll align with regardless of which year it's in, just so it's, just so it's mentioned.
Yeah.
Does that work?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Thank you for bringing that up. So you have Friday and Saturday off.
Okay. I think it's Sunday, too.
Sunday off, too.
No, you're coming back to work Monday.
Engineers' report. INI reduction program update.
Yeah, well, thank you, Mayor Council. No action tonight, just quick update on the three items there. Actually, I'll add maybe a fourth one. With that said, construction has started. Casson Meadows is going to start some grading on the north part of town. Bigelow Void in the northwest part of town has kicked off their construction. They started last year, along with Meadow Brook off of 16th Street, kind of on the east side of town there. So subdivision's in full effect, so be looking for a lot more construction activity. So a quick update on that. INI reduction program, just giving a quick update on where we're at on that. We had two kinds of sides of that. One was the cities projects that include the bypass pumping plan. We got that all completed last fall, actually last spring, looking for another significant rain event. What do we do with our own collection system, knowing that we probably don't have our INI addressed in the time of man, and how do we bypass? That is completed. Two of them that are somewhat related is the manhole inspections. There's just a handful of those remaining. We're 99% complete with those, waiting for city staff to dig up a couple of them that We're 99% complete with those, waiting for city staff to dig up a couple of them that we found. And the sewer televising that we're doing, that is about 95% complete. Same thing on their side of things. They're filling in the last little gaps on their side of things. So those two items are going to be done here in the next couple of weeks. We're going to take that information, assemble the reports, sit down with staff, and ask ourselves, what is the next step with respect to INI within the city, and what do we do? So that's going to be coming here in the next months as we move forward. So with that, so that's kind of the city side of things. We're also working on the private side, as we're probably all aware of. Some of the key items there was the education. We have that website. We had some public meetings that was marginally intended. There hasn't been a whole lot of questions from the citizens or comments on our side of things, so we assume that no news is good news with that respect. A lot of people are signing up. The laterals that we kind of got off and running here, pre-COVID, about 90% of those are done. Council direction was provide a last notice to those property owners that haven't signed up, and that drop dead date is being set. And that is also lining up with our lateral inspection program that we started up after COVID. Again, those are the older houses, the other half of the city. That has just been kicked off in the last couple of weeks. So we're full steam on that and plan on doing that throughout the summer. So that's the private side of the INI reduction program. We'll pause there and see if there's any questions on that. I just wanted to give a high little update that we're working on things we haven't really talked about it in more of a high-level perspective, so we're definitely moving on some things there, so.
As far as the bypass program, that's all set to go this spring. I mean, pumps are ready, the trucks are...
Yep, we worked out something with staff. We marked some manholes. We got a protocol set up. Council authorized purchasing some larger pumps. Those were purchased online, as far as I know, so.
We will run some drills this summer, too.
Yep, that was the other thing we did complete last spring, too, so.
Okay, thank you.
The reminder, though, to complete that and work with public works on that, so.
Thank you.
Mel, just keep moving on then. TH57 update. So again, big picture there, 2022 construction. We've got some clear direction. We've been struggling with MINDOT with all their different review agency groups to get some direction on that, but we do have good direction. So there is a MINDOT website, and we're meeting with the chamber. A couple of weeks ago, we met, went over that with the chamber and the business concerns, so starting to work out those details now that we got to get into the good direction on the project. Meeting with some potentially impacted property owners, was expect the right-of-way or some kind of right-of-way that we have, so we're working that with the property owner. Public engagement, we expecting that in May here. Really want to open this thing up now that we got some clear direction to bring it out to the public and say, here's what we're looking at. What's everybody thinking? And start addressing concerns, start talking about the affected property owners, detour, et cetera. So we've had that conversation at a real high level with the chamber, and previously with those citizens, but now we got more clarity as the project's moving forward. Planning that again in May. The roadway's still in pretty rough shape. We made the maintenance request into the MINDOT's maintenance staff that we're looking at filling those potholes, so they're well aware of our concerns that we've had in the past, and I took it maybe upon myself to reiterate those concerns, because it's a pretty rough road out there. So that's 57 update. Any questions, comments, concerns? Again, I'll pause there.
I know I had had that question about that several block section. I don't know if you had a question on it, too, but...
That's what I was going to question.
Oh, okay. I know that I have had a couple of people ask me, and I know I talked to you about it a little bit. Maybe you could just kind of explain your thought process on that.
Absolutely. So I'm assuming the question's regarding the limits of our project, the third, fourth, I'm sorry, the 57 projects up to the north end of, I think it's 13th Street, which is Houston's Fairground, North End or Houston's Fairgrounds area there. That's the limits of our 57 project. In addition to that, we're looking at the Roundabout project that's going to go south of 16th Street, so I think there's like a four-ish block section in there that is MINDOT. Right-of-way, MINDOT Road, that is not planned to be reconstructed with either one of those projects. That was talked about with MINDOT. It has not been resolved without us getting kind of lumped into one project or the other. From my perspective, we don't have any utilities underneath that section of the road, so there's not a big concern from our utility perspective to coordinate those needs, because our utilities are kind of on that frontage road on the east side of 57. So I haven't really pushed that from our perspective. That was obviously big picture. Taxpayer, how do we do projects to make sure we get everything kind of through the corridor repaired? That's something that I can bring back to MINDOT to see what their plans are. I do know that they were planning stuff from around about at 16th Street into Manorville, too, as a long-term project on their end. So I'll circle back on that to see where they're at, but I just haven't pushed it from our perspective, because there's not a big city interest with respect to our utilities, so.
Sure, all right.
But I will put that on our next agenda. So last one, flood protection update. That one, we really haven't talked about to much level. We've started with some permitting discussions with the DNR to really see where the public water ends. There's some confusion there, so we've really got kind of our arms around that. Maston Creek is the public water. Where it terminates ultimately, the termination that we have is Highway 14, which changes permitting and what we can and can't do on a public water, because if we pond something on the upstream side of Highway 14, kind of changes that. So we kind of need to get our arms around that, so we got some clarification there. So that's moving forward, and we're really starting to get some vision on where we're going to look at some ponding, what improvements we can do. So really going to start seeing that come to the front, and again, I think that's going to be a spring/summer presentation, sort of discussion, have some open houses within the community to see what everybody else thinks of, what kind of we have for vision to kind of tame that river, or the creek, I guess it is, creek through town there. In addition to that, that kind of was leading into our city side of things and our manhole inspections, because now we've inspected manholes. A few of those manholes are in the floodplain. They flooded out in the 2019 flood, so we're kind of getting, correlating back to if we reduce flood, how does that help the manholes and all that jazz, and how that the creek is related to our sanitary sewer system. And obviously, that's, we fill the creek into our sanitary sewer, now that backs up homes into the city. So we're trying to correlate that all together to see what kind of synergy we can get between the two projects, and see what, reducing the flood elevation of the river, how we can have additional benefit to those manholes that are within the floodplain. Manholes that we can't get on the floodplain, maybe we seal them up, so it's all kind of in motion right now, so.
Okay.
Wanted to give a quick update there. Again, I'll pause. Any questions, comments, concerns, thoughts? Now, thank you for continuing the flood stuff, so appreciate that.
Thank you.
That was it. Thanks, Brandon. Personnel. Number one, fire department. Jim McAndrews, one-year leave of absence effective 4-2 of '21. There's a letter in your packet. Anything to add? Nope, nope. Okay. Okay. Any questions for the chief on that? Okay. I'll make a motion to accept the leave of absence for one year for Jim McAndrews from the fire department.
Second.
Thanks, Mel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The second one is Doug Griffin, resignation effective 4-2. You have his letter in there, resigning as a 4-2, so I'd like to thank him for his service in the fire department and wish him the best. After 21 years, I'll make a motion to accept the letter of resignation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Mel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Joe, are you having any updates on improvement? How's that going?
Uh, yeah, we've got six applications. Right now, we're scheduled for our testing on May 1st, Saturday morning, so all six candidates will go through testing, and then we'll move forward with interviews sometime shortly after that, and I'll let you know once we get those days scheduled, so.
Awesome.
But that's where we're at right now.
Thanks, Joe. Thanks, Joe.